2019 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Allison Osby.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Mugerower.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Peck.
Herman.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please stand while councilmember Allison Osby leads us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unredoubled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If my two students would come up this way, we have a certificate for you and a thank you. Now, you're Jenna, correct? This is for you Jenna, and if you want to look into that corner so the camera can get you, so family and friends can see you on TV. Couple of questions for you: your name, age, where you go to school, and your favorite subject. Now, you've had five minutes to think about your favorite subject.
My name is Jenna, and I go to Franklin Elementary, and I'm nine. My favorite subject of school is basically where writing. I really like big writing because I like to think of ideas for writing projects.
Very creative, thank you. And Breeze? The same questions, your name, age, where you go to school, and your favorite subject.
My name is Breeze. I'm eleven. My favorite subject is art, and I go to school at Smith.
Okay, well, thank you. And this is for you. Now, you can stay and watch the council meeting, or go home and do homework, or go home and watch it snow, too. Thank you. Before we start the agenda, I'd like to welcome the students that are here tonight from Professor Simmons, political science class. You should all have an agenda for the meeting. If not, there are some out front before you came in, and I will be talking to your class Thursday morning at about nine o'clock, so if you have any questions from the meeting and the agenda, please ask them on Thursday morning. So, we're glad to have you here.
Or tonight, too.
Or tonight, too. This is our first time for citizen statements to the council. Pam, is anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
I'll move on to the consent agenda items. These are items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mauer, if you wouldn't mind, I just have a question regarding 1946, the approved fees for the children's amusement park, amusement rides, water equipment, specifically the tennis and pickleball courts. If you can give us some background as to where you got to the point where you're asking to start charging for rentals of those new courts, or the revamped courts?
Yes. This was actually part of our proposal that the Parks Board took a look at back in 2014, when we were talking about some of the baseball field and other athletic field rental fees. At that time, the Parks Board decided not to institute a fee for tennis and basketball courts. Since that time, we reconstructed the tennis courts at Menominee Park and included new pickleball courts, the only ones that are within the city park system. And since then, we've started to receive more inquiries from groups and organizations and businesses wondering about renting and reserving those. So, we took the discussion back to the Parks Board back in December and opened it up for their discussion. They asked us to come back in January with the recommendation after we took a look at how other communities were handling it. We did a survey, and the results of some of the people that responded to the survey were in your packet. So, what we did was went back to the Parks Board in January with a recommendation of $5 per court, per hour, and this is to reserve the courts for specific use. If people are coming out there to play tennis or pickleball, obviously, there's no charge for that, but this is for individuals or groups that might want to organize a tournament, league play, such things like that.
Okay. That's my only question for you. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Mauer, also regarding 1946, who I emailed, I had a couple of clarifying questions. I just wanted to ask, so if we just clarify it again, it's only for those groups that are asking to reserve that would be charged those fees, right?
That's correct.
And I think in your email to me, you were saying that someone could theoretically request those reservations, like an unlimited number, because we don't really spell out that, and that's more in the administrative side of things. But I would trust that your department would be judicious if a group came and said, you know, we want, you know, every Saturday morning from nine to noon, that there would be some discretion there.
Correct. And we have had some of that discussion as well with the Parks Board. Because we only have four pickleball courts, really under our jurisdiction and control, we would most likely say that you can only reserve up to two of those, so that we have two remaining for just general drop-in use. So, that's how we would handle it.
Okay, I see. So, then if somebody is using that court, for example, but then someone came along, the way that gets resolved is they're actually showing their reservation, their printed-out reservation, just like the shelters?
Correct. When you run to the, or reserve a shelter in the park system, we give you a receipt that has rules on the back for what you can and can't do with the shelter, and then what they do is they just come to the court or to the shelter with that reservation permit. What we also do is we're going to have a small kiosk, and then each week, we put in there, if the courts are rented, it'll give the name of the individual, which court, and what time, just like we do with our shelter reservations.
Oh, like a printed-out kiosk?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
All right.
I just want to clarify, too, that we've had a longstanding arrangement with the school district and the recreation department, and when the Parks Board approved this or recommended approval, we are going to keep that long-term arrangement where we don't charge the school district.
Thank you.
If there are no further council questions or discussion, would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we'll move into pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 19-57, modify parking regulations on South Park Avenue, Court Street, and North Main Street. If anyone registered to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the vote?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-58, approve parking regulation updates on Otter and Washington Avenue. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-59, approve official mapping for widening of North Kohler Street right-of-way north of Oshkosh Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-60, approve zone change from single-family, nine district in Prince SR-9, and institutional district in Prince I, close Prince to institutional district with planned development overlay in Prince I-PD, close Prince at 575 Monroe Street, 581 Monroe Street, and 532 Broad Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Burridge, we spoke last week, this is the one with the fencing.
Correct.
Correct. Could you just explain a little bit about why we would go ahead with an additional chain link fencing? I know that we have that along Parkway Avenue, and they wanted to keep a consistent look and for many savings. Could you just talk a little bit about that and what the options are there?
Correct. Some of the decision-making process that we were able to recommend or get behind the proposal for the chain link fence was, it goes back to historic, part of its historical perspective. We actually had the Board of Appeals approve that front yard chain link fence a number of years ago, so when they were looking to expand to the south, they were going to put up a new fence, and they wanted to be consistent with the existing fencing as far as a look. So, that was one thing. I think the reason, one of the reasons we were able to support it, get behind it, was we were putting a requirement on there that there be some type of landscaping between that southern property, and I believe the southern fence line, I think that's the condition. I think we had put in the conditions that we want so much landscaping points along that southern fence boundary. I've got to find the resolution now.
Yeah, I think it was like 100 points or something.
Something like that, correct. So, it's not going to be, so the intent won't be, it won't be the fence just up against the property line. I think there's a setback to the property line, and we're going to try and buffer it, mitigate it a little bit with some landscaping.
So, it's really exciting that they're adding on some more place space and a garden. The concern was from, I guess, a couple of the neighbors about the extent of chain link, and I guess some of the aesthetic as well, some of the safety, and I didn't know this, are we, do we comply with the ASTM, and this might actually be a Mr. Mauer question, about whether or not the holes in the chain link are small enough so it can't be climbed?
Yes. ASTM and CPSI are regulatory agencies for playground equipment.
So, does that apply to the Boys and Girls Club since it's quasi-private?
It is private.
I do not know that answer.
Okay, all right. I think there were some safety concerns on ASTM about, you know, the certain projections and the holes being small enough so that kids couldn't climb it.
I don't recall seeing that, I don't, was that an email that came out to us? Because I don't remember seeing that.
No, I just happened to look it up. Someone brought up the ASTM, and I wasn't familiar with it.
I mean, it's, the fence that they're proposing is your standard chain link fence, and you see them virtually all, you know, in a lot of places. I see them surrounding a lot of schoolyards nowadays, so I think from that, not aware of the standard that you're talking about. I think we had this discussion, if we had it, may potentially do all over again, we might look at a different type of fencing, but there's so much chain link out there right now that until maybe they go to replace it at some point down the line, and then maybe we can look at, you know, working with them on some other type of fence, like a wrought iron, something like, it's in front of Lincoln School right now, something like that.
Well, maybe it's an opportunity for some of the neighborhoods to get creative and work with them on some of the garden things. Thanks.
I just want to make sure that everyone understood this is property adjacent to the Boys and Girls Club. If there are no further questions, would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 19-61, amend Division VI Residential Rental Contract Registration and Inspection Program of Chapter 16 Housing Code, and Prince Rental Housing Advisory Board recommends approval. Did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burridge, under the Section 16-49, residential rental inspection, I'm looking at number C, inspections shall be conducted in occupied dwelling unit with consent from an adult tenant. That's all it says. We apparently took out that the adult tenant has to be present at the time? I think that kind of leaves it open, what, the inspection department can call the tenant and say, "We're coming over." Tenant says, "I'm not going to be there, but go ahead and go to my apartment?" Why would we take out that the tenant has to be present at the time of the inspection?
That one, I don't know. I wasn't part of actually updating.
I believe that was taken out because as a practical matter, what happens is the tenant says, "You can go in, but I can't be there, but my friend or someone, other adult, is going to be there." The reality is, the city would never go into a rental without some authorized person being there. It just may not happen to be the tenant who is otherwise given permission.
Well, I guess my concern is, this goes back to our special event ordinance, it's too vague. It leads for interpretation, in my opinion. I just think it just, it should have some verbiage that says, "In occupied dwelling unit with consent from an adult tenant, present or designated person," or something. Otherwise, it just really, to me, opens up, I mean, obviously, our staff would not go in there, I get that, but again, this is an ordinance, and if somebody contests it or makes an issue out of it, it's an open-ended, to me, it's an open-ended statement, and I don't, I think it needs to have one more word or something added to it. It's just my interpretation, but I might be looking at it wrong, so. Maybe one of the additional words could be added with the tenant, with the adult tenant or designee, present at the time of inspection. Something. I just think it's too vague to leave it open-ended like that. I just think it needs something else. I agree with everything else above it. A is fine. I have no issue with the reason, the findings, just that one sentence, for whatever reason, maybe that's my law enforcement background, looks at it as an open-ended situation, I just have a problem with that, that one sentence.
Our office would have a problem with them going in without anyone being there, too.
Right. And so, I think we should show the intent. The intent is that there will be someone present, whether it's the tenant or the tenant designee, it could be his parents, as far as. And in paragraph two, it addresses when it's a vacant dwelling unit, so that would give you the coverage, because there it talks about who is present at the time of the inspection. But is vacant meaning an empty apartment, or is it vacant because the tenant's not there? No, it's a vacant dwelling unit. No, I, what, I'm actually, what I'm suggesting is that there may be value that you're suggesting to put that in paragraph one, because that's a separate instance from paragraph two, and we're already addressing in paragraph two that somebody's present at the time of the inspection, so there may be some value to putting in, and an adult, you know, and with an adult tenant or designee present at the time of inspection. I just think that takes the burden off of our inspectors, so that they, you know, obviously, we, I'm sure, Aaron and Alan and then with, and Mr. Zerati would say, "You can't go unless there's a tenant there," or the landlord, or somebody, but I just think we want to have that so that there's just no confusion on the ordinance.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Yeah, pretty much, it was the same thing. I had reached out to Ms. Lawrence, and she, of course, is out of the area, and Dave and I were not able to connect until right before, but essentially, it was just looking at the wording and thinking we needed to button it up a little bit, just so that it's clear and it can't be misinterpreted in any manner, so I think just maybe a little bit more defined wording, just so it's not that perception if somebody just reads it like that, because that was my question as well.
Right. The suggestive language won't change, it is perfectly consistent with what the intent of staff was.
Okay.
I'll just add my two cents worth that there should be someone present when there's an inspection made, either the tenant or parent, all you kids, and parents and so forth. It doesn't happen in the world of real estate, we have a home inspection, there should be someone present, both the realtor and the potential buyer, so. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. So, as the council liaison for the Rental Housing Advisory Board, I can say that with all emphasis, the inspections Department has very clearly stated they will not enter if there is not someone present and without permission. However, I would agree with fellow council members, perhaps that could be a little clearer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd be happy to offer up language, but I can't make a motion, so. No, well, that's.
Herman?
Don't die on us, no. So, to go what you're saying, I'd like to make an amendment to C1, in an occupied dwelling unit with consent from adult tenant, present or designated. Or designee?
Whatever you said, Mark.
Whatever that word was, designated.
Or a designee of the tenant.
There you go, designee of the tenant. Present at the time of inspection. It has to be an adult, it can't be a juvenile kid, it can't be, you know, Cousin Larry from California that just happens to be hanging out in the apartment that day, and, you know.
Although, if Cousin Larry's an adult, then he would fit that.
Yeah, I suppose.
I think we can exclude Larry's.
Yeah, that's true. In an occupied dwelling unit with the consent from adult tenant or designee, adult designee.
Yeah.
How's that sound? Present at the time of the inspection. Present at the time, yeah, I would like to have that, present at the time of inspection. Just so that's clarified, I don't, I don't know how many of the students out there are tenants, but I would think you'd agree with that, that would make sense, right? Yeah, I see a lot of heads nod, so.
I'll second that.
All right, second.
We have a motion and a second to include the new wording. Would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
I have a vote on ordinance 19-61 with the amendment. Approve zone change from single-family, whoops, sorry, that's right. Amend Division VI Residential Rental Contract Registration Inspection Program of Chapter 16 Housing Code, Rental Housing Advisory Board recommends approval. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
It's already on the floor, isn't it?
It's on the floor.
Yeah.
Discussion?
We're still on it.
Yeah, that motion's still on the floor. Now, you have the amended motion on the floor. So, you, you're okay on motions?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the Rental Housing Advisory Board. They worked very hard for a while to get this right. Staff put in a lot of time to get the data and get some analysis done for us. As part of this, you're going to see that there are four districts identified for inspection, and generally, those were determined by some data from different sources within the city, crime data and nuisance ordinance violations and things like that, and so I feel pretty confident in those areas that should be inspected and need some improvement should fall within those districts that were identified. With that said, this program still will not, in my opinion, do enough to improve the health, safety, and wellness of the rental community here in the city of Oshkosh. This will be a very minimally effective program. Previously, we had about a 5% to 6% effective rate. Basically, we only gained entry into about 5% to 6% of the homes we sent notices out to, and if that trend continues, only gaining access to 5% to 6% of the several thousand isn't very effective use of $25,000 that we budgeted for this, and we don't know how much this is going to cost, and so it just still will not be effective. I know several councilmembers are going to feel that a inspection program in general is a good thing, but it's just not enough. If we want to really improve the health, safety, and wellness of the rental community and our community in general, then we should actually be inspecting all homes within those areas, not just rental properties, but I don't think the community is going to be in favor of that, nor would we have the budget for that, but it doesn't mean that that's not the right thing to do if you really want to improve health, safety, and wellness of the entire community, not just the rental community. As a clarifier, just so people know, this will not include any exterior inspections. Reason for that would be the board felt that, under state code, with what the state legislators gave to us, if they passed, if a rental property passed a exterior inspection, they would no longer be within the program, and they would have passed it and wouldn't have been able to be inspected for five years. So, the board felt that by passing an exterior only inspection, they shouldn't be exempted, so that instead of inspecting exterior and interior, it's only going to be just, if you get access to the interior, we'll do a full inspection, and we won't do a drive-by or a walk-by like we were currently doing. So, we will not be touching those houses next door that have visible violations or visible repairs needed. Guess those are the highlights I wanted to touch on. Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
I want to remind Mr. Mugerower that the reason the initial attempt did not achieve the success rate we hoped for was many landlords sent intimidating and threatening letters to their tenants, telling them that they would be responsible for the inspection, they'd be responsible for repairs, and almost telling them that they would be terminating their lease, so I think there was a tremendous amount of opposition from the rental community initially, and I think it's morally wrong to threaten your tenants with the type of letters that were sent to these people, young and old alike, initially to stop the program. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out and make the distinction that those exterior inspections would not be done as part of this rental inspection program, however, that does not exempt or preclude the exterior inspection when there is a complaint based, or a complaint lodged. There's two different types of inspections that our city handles, so I just wanted to make that distinction. If there are complaints made, those inspections would go on, as I understand it.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Just based on the comments made by Mr. Mugerower and Deputy Mayor Palmary and Mayor Steve Cummings, I'm thinking if there's something in particular regarding to the overall ordinance for the rental units, we should probably put that on an agenda for down the road and just speak directly to the amendment that's actually here, just to make sure that we're not conflicting or confusing the public. That's just my opinion, but, I mean, I'm not upset or anything, Matt, don't take it that way. I just was thinking that, I wasn't sure that, I think if there's something that may be specifically in regards to looking at the overall program, and if you think that there are things that we can do to make it better for the community, then maybe we should put that on the agenda down the road.
Point of clarification, if I made, that's what's on the agenda right now. We're approving the new inspection program, we haven't approved it before.
But it sounds like you're looking for something beyond what's actually in here as well, or maybe I misinterpreted what you said.
A different inspection program or a better inspection program than what is being put forth on the table.
That's what I'm saying. Okay.
If there's no further discussion, would you please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
No.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried 5-1.
Deb, would you please, it's not working again, so just disconnect yourself. Thank you. Ordinance 19-62, amend Section 30-74, Table of Land Uses and 30-78, Commercial Land Uses of Chapter 30, zoning ordinance to establish short-term rentals, and Prince Plan Commission recommends approval. City Clerk?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burridge, I guess, can you kind of give a little history of where we, where this came from and where we're going? And my biggest concern is, is this going to have an impact to the majority of our homeowners that rent their home during EAA? I guess I, I just think that I don't want to muddy the water for our citizens, and yet I understand the VBRO people, I understand the B&amp;B people, the bed and breakfast people, pay room tax and all those other things, and I know the playing field needs to be leveled, and the state's allowed us to do that, but just can you kind of give us an overview of why we need this ordinance and what the intent of this ordinance is to do?
Sure. And, and right now, on this particular item, remember, we're talking about the zoning.
I know.
That's what, and the zoning right now, right now we have what's, what's termed vacation rentals in our zoning ordinance, and that's for 14, 14 days or less. And that's only in, it's only, right now it's currently only allowed in one, two, three, four, five, five zoning districts. With what happened with the state, the state law, the right to rent law passed, what happened was they pretty much, they, they exempted local zoning control on what's termed short-term rentals. So if you have a house and you want to rent it out on a short-term basis, you're allowed to do that. So this action that we're requesting right now is we're just saying that short-term rentals, anything less than 29 days can, if you have a rental unit, it's now permissible in every zoning district. So it's no longer limiting, you're not limited in any zoning district, any zoning district where you have a residential dwelling unit, you can have a short-term rental. And the reason why we're doing that is to be consistent with that state law change.
Okay. All right, good. Okay.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Burridge, I guess, just for folks out there too, I know there was some confusion about this, just in regard to the 10 days. And this was not targeting any particular event, it was just saying that anything 10 days, and in addition to 10 days, anything under 10 days does not fall into this.
Correct. The DAT cap, well, first of all, that the DAT cap tourist rooming house license kicks in at 10 days, and that's kind of why we, why we picked the 10 days. I think some communities, you can make an argument that it should be at day one, that you should be renting out a safe house, and you should have to go through some of these inspections. Ours, however, is, is sitting at that 10 days to be consistent, again, with, with the state, with the state requirements.
Just for folks out there watching, tell them what DAT cap is.
Oh, God, that's.
Department of Agriculture, Trade, Consumer Protection.
Correct.
Thanks.
I see no other council members wishing to speak. Would you please, please take a roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
This is ordinance 19-63, creates section 8-1.2 Short-Term Rentals of the Municipal Code. Is anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
It's not all jumping at once. Discussion? No one appears to want to speak to?
I think since Mr. Burridge is, is present, maybe he can speak to it.
Okay. This is where, kind of where we start to implement the short-term rental requirements. So this is where we start to get into the, you have to have an application, you have to have the inspection, you have to have Winnebago County actually come out and do the inspection. So this is kind of where the rubber hits the road, is where we require the actual licensing of the structure. That's where the, that's where the, the particular design standards come into play. You can't have, you know, things like grills and things like that, you have to have so much floor space, and those, those requirements that you're seeing coming into this ordinance are coming down from the state. We picked a lot of that stuff up from, from some of the state rooming house requirements, and they're just, and they're just in the ordinance. So really what that is, is the license itself is how we, is how we're implementing the short-term rentals. I can try and answer specifics on it.
Yeah, as opposed to the zoning, this is the, the regulatory side of the licensing and, and things like that. That's probably the best way to describe it.
Correct.
Councilmember Herman.
I guess I'm just looking at the letter we unfortunately didn't receive until tonight, but obviously it appears EAA is not real happy with this, and I, I believe that probably 90% of our people that rent their homes out rent during EAA. I know there are some that rent EAA, some rent Country USA, some probably rent Rock USA and Life Fest too, and maybe run a B&amp;B or BVRO out of their house without reporting it, but I guess, I know we're following state statute, and I understand all that. I'm just wondering because of the uniqueness of EAA and that, that we shouldn't look at going from 10 days to 16 days? Because I do believe that a lot of vendors come more, you know, they have to come earlier and stay longer, and I think a lot of those vendors stay at private residential properties throughout the city, and I, I just would hate to have this affect EAA, what EAA has all done for the community of Oshkosh and, and putting us on the map and things like that. I just think that we need to work with that important partner on, on this. I know the CVB has not really weighed in on it one way or the other, they're, they're willing to work with, you know, the city on it, but I just think that 10, 10 days, the convention runs seven, I think we got to give a little room here on, on it. I guess I would like, there's support from other council members to bump it up to 16 nights before everything kicks, but I guess some of that kicks in no matter what, right? At 10 days?
10 days, the, 10 days the state tourist rooming house license requirement comes into play, and that state rooming house requirements has most of the requirements for getting that license, so the inspection from the health department, those all come in through that, through that requirement. Our, you know, what we're envisioning is, you know, some, some paperwork and applications showing, okay, this is your house, this is how many rooms you have, this is what you're renting out, that way we can at least know what's going on, and then you have a, in, in some cases, you'll have a registered agent that might not be yourself if we have a problem with some, with any of these places.
Okay. This would be for Mr. Traska then. Traska, if we, we can't, our local ordinance can't supersede state statute, correct?
Correct.
So state statute says 10 days, we really can't supersede that. Correct?
Well, we could. So just to be clear about what we're talking about, we're, the zoning, are the city's regulatory aspect of this does not have to be 10 days. If it was nine days, or if it was 11 days, it would not violate the state tourist rooming house license, because that's, it's a different thing.
Okay. I think the practical side of it is that it's, if we say 16 days, we say something that's different from state law, we're pretty sure there'd be confusion that people would think that, oh, the city said that, it's 16 days, therefore the state rule is 16. The state rules will always be 10 days unless the state changes that. And actually, I talked to Mr. Gelsner, I said, well, maybe there'd be some value to getting that change at the state level, but in the meantime, we still have the hand we're dealt. So I think Mr. Gelsner understands that, but I think he's representing the vendors, because for the, I think the attendees, the, the audience at EAA, this, the 10 days would be sufficient, and I think that was staff's thinking. The vendors, from everything I've heard, there was a gentleman who came, spoke a couple weeks ago to the council, made the similar request. I think it's legitimate that the vendors do stay more than 10 days. I, I won't deny that, I think that that's real. The question is, is that's a narrow group of people, do we want to give them that, extend that courtesy that they wouldn't, those people wouldn't have to give those licenses if that's the only rental they did in the whole year? And that's really the question before the council.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to clarify, so if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong. So as it's proposed right now, short-term rental license would kick in at 11 days. Anything more than 10, you need to have a short-term rental license. However, on day one, you have to remit room tax, no matter what. And that's what we're really talking about to the folks from EAA and everybody else who rents, is the 10% room tax that they're going to be getting hit with. That starts on day one, no matter if you have a short-term rental license or not, or a B&amp;B from the state, or the seller's permit for sales tax, room tax starts on day one.
And the room tax is item 34, we're really slicing this thin tonight.
But they're all linked, because they're all in together, all the information's here together, and that's why I bring it up, but that, no matter the 10 or the 16 or the 14, their real complaint is the room tax.
Right.
When it really boils down to it, and that starts on day one, if we enact the room tax on, if we correct the room tax that we have on the books already.
Mr. Gelsner's letter, I believe, was limited to just item 33 because he knew that I was putting on the agenda to staff recommend to lay over that issue. I think you're correct that they do have that concern, but I think he, I think he took it, that I was giving him as an act of good faith, that I'd be recommending we lay it over, because there's a couple options on what we can do if we want to change that, but that day one requirement for the room tax exists right now if council takes no action on item 34. So if we're going to revisit that issue, I want to take a little more time, the city attorney gave you a very good memo on options that are available to you, and I think you probably want to absorb that and, and think about which option you think might be, work best. No one's perfect, no one of those options are perfect, and I think it's worthwhile kicking around. Mr. Gelsner, I think, took me on my word that, that I was going to recommend that, and I am, but 30, so that's why he limited his, the scope of his letter to 33. If I hadn't made that show of good faith with him, he would have given you a separate letter on 34, I'm almost certain.
I'm just wondering, is it appropriate to lay this one over in addition to the next one, as they are somewhat linked? Or what my fellow council members think as to, as to that?
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to what Mr. Muggerauer is saying, I guess I have that same question as well. You know, unless basically what you're saying is that 19-63 is, I mean, essentially we're handcuffed by the state to have to create and pass something in order to move on, that's, I mean, I'm, is that essentially what you're saying?
Our, and I'm going to, I think I'm going to defer to Mr. Traska for this, because the, the new rules that the state adopted said short-term rentals are anything less than 29 days.
Anything more than, more than six, less than 29.
Okay, so.
More than seven, one of those two.
So our issue is, when are we going to put in ours? We believe that it's absolutely appropriate that we have this regulation. Mr. Burridge shared with me an article about just the number of Airbnbs that were surveyed that don't meet certain safety standards, so we want to have something. So really, it's a question of, when do we want to kick it in?
So I mean, I mean, I get that, because obviously we have a rental inspection program for actual rental properties, but, you know, that, that's kind of my question is, you know, if we have, is, is there a difference between somebody who owns and operates and has an LLC or an S corp or a C corp, you know, with their rental properties, as compared to somebody whose owner occupied, who essentially is, I mean, the mortgage is in their name, they're living in the household 350 days out of the year, but then rented out for a little bit, I mean, is, is the state really saying, and is that what we're really saying, is that's who we want to go after? Is those, that it's not really a business? At the end of the day, they're supposed to declare the income, but, you know, is that our, our role to police that? So I mean, that's, that's where I'm kind of questioning, because that was some of the questions I had, you know, last week, and, you know, it's a lot to digest, so that's why I want to see, like, if you're saying, we, in order to move forward, we have to pass this, or do we, can this be laid over, as Mr. Muggerauer said, so that we can all kind of chew on this a bit and think it through before, and actually understand what the state is saying, what is our right as a municipality, and then how to execute from there? Because I'll be honest, it's as clear as mud for me.
Councilmember Herman.
And I guess I agree with the council member Allison Osby, because, you know, not even the people that vacate their home, what about the people that stay in their home and rent a bedroom out?
It's different, that's a different set of circumstances, because when we're residing in the house yet, that is different.
Okay, well, there's nothing that really explains that, it kind of talks about, you know, doesn't, does it mention, I, I read it, and I'm not sure if I missed it, does it say that it has to be not owner occupied, like in a rental situation? So it, so it, so if John Jones down the street wants to rent out a bedroom for EAA, he can do that, and he doesn't have to have, and he can rent it out for 100 bucks a night, and he can do that and not have to pay anything?
Owner occupies are a different, if, when you're maintaining your owner occupied status, when you're actually residing in the, in the dwelling, that's a different, that's a different standard.
So that doesn't fall under this ordinance at all?
And typically, those short-term rentals aren't doing that, you're running it, it's no different than.
And you're not in the house in short-term rentals, right?
Okay.
I just want to clarify that, because I think there's a lot of people that do it both ways.
Correct. And I think the, the real dilemma we have is you've got the new developments with the Airbnbs of the world, and that, and new, that new economy versus we were doing Airbnb before Airbnb existed.
B&amp;B was the wrong, yeah.
And now, because we're, because we're very unique, and we can't reconcile that with state law, we have to follow what the state law says, so when are we going to, when are we going to require this to kick in? And we have to decide on, we just have to pick a number of days that we want to do it at. We're certain that there will be confusion if we have a 16-day or something other than 10, because it'll just confuse people on the operational side, and I can predict that somebody will call us and ask us about our rule, and we'll say, our rule says 16 days, and they will make the incorrect assumption that that also applies to the state law. That's the practical side of it, and I, you know, the council understands that, it, that's really the, the challenge that we have, and I think that's why staff chose the 10 days, because they felt it would, from a regula, not from a regulatory standpoint, but just from a practical standpoint, people would understand, 10 is 10 across the board, but we don't have, as Mr. Gelsner says, we are not required to do 10 days. We recommended 10 days because we thought it would be practical in the long run.
There's one other consideration, too. We're talking the city of Oshkosh, but many people in the surrounding townships are renting out their homes, and I can guarantee people that come here from California, or New York, or Indiana, don't really know if the homes in the town of Black Wolf, the city of Oshkosh, or Algoma, so do we know what the townships will be doing with that so as to not further confuse a visitor?
I'd suspect, and this is just a guess, that they're not going to do it at all, except in some of the more, some of the, some of the communities that have staff that can enforce those, but I would say the ones that you cited probably won't regulate it at all.
So will that further confuse a visitor that?
That will always be, because I'm sure everybody's saying they're going to Oshkosh for the flying. You're absolutely right. That, that's going to exist, that exists today.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
So I guess that would be my question as well, then, from an economic development standpoint, you know, if, if we're implementing but surrounding areas are not, are we pushing essentially that business out of Oshkosh into the surrounding communities?
I would say no, because the demand is so high for this housing that it's really going to be the person who not is renting the facility, or not, or not the, the hotel occupant, but the person renting out their house, they're going to have the responsibility, and that'll, that'll be incumbent upon us to, to get the word out, work very closely with the CVB. I've talked with Ms. Albright, she recognizes that they're going to have to do a lot of work to, to get the word out on that, and it will take some time. But from a safety standpoint, because of the things that, that we need to look at, if you saw this article, and I'd be happy to share it with you, you know, there's statistics on, and this is about Airbnb, the number that don't have smoke detectors or CO detectors, what was, what were the other ones in the article, Darren? I've got it here, right? Prevalence of fire extinguishers, prevalence of first aid kits, and. Prevalence of fire extinguishers, prevalence of first aid kits, and smoke alarms 80% nationwide, fire extinguishers average nationwide 42%. So we would, those types of things, we would, we would expect that people would have through our process.
The gist of that article is, I think that came up with fire, from the fire side of things, it wasn't looking at some of the other safety issues that might be out there as well.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I just had a question, I don't know if it would be possible, but I think the last thing we want to do as a council is put a bad taste in people's mouths about EAA, which along with probably Oshkosh Corp. has put us on the map, like one of us has said. Would there be a possibility to have like a blackout date for some of these proposals of like three days before the calendar year, and three days after during the EAA year, so we don't have to enforce these things? Because I've talked to plenty of people that rent out their homes, it's return customers year after year that they're having the same families come. And I mean, the people are knowledgeable people, they aren't being taken advantage of, it's not the shady deal that might happen in July, coming to rent out a home for a month for some family reunion-type thing. So I mean, these homes are usually top-notch homes that people expect to be rented out.
I don't know the answer to that question. That's a great question. I think there are a lot of eyes that lit up with that. I don't have the answer for you. If, that, if council wants to lay it over for us to investigate that, you know, certainly we can do that.
Because I mean, I think...
Or any of these issues. I think there's, that one's, that one's very interesting. Dave, I don't even know if you, if you're prepared to answer a question like that about blackout dates.
Well, you just have to be careful about being arbitrary, like...
Well, we can choose.
You're choosing who you like and who you don't like.
Well, we're allowed to do that.
Pardon?
Aren't we? We're allowed to do that, aren't we?
Arbitrary and pretty capricious.
I mean, we can pick and choose which events are treated which way.
You could be arbitrary and capricious, too. I'm not, and I'm not arguing, you just need to keep in mind the reason you're selecting certain groups over others.
I'm intrigued enough by the comment that, you know, we should be getting this adopted as soon as possible. I'm just being honest with you. But it's, it's, end of January, we've been doing without it for 22 days, 14 days, or I guess 20, it's going to be 21 days more before we next meet, probably isn't the end of the world. And if that's, if that's what council wants us to do, to do a little more research, take some of these ideas around, I'd appreciate any other suggestions like that, because, so we can, you know, make sure we investigate any of the other issues. I don't know if we can do that. As Mr. Prosket said, we have to look at those things to make sure we, we wouldn't be perceived. I mean, anybody can argue, anybody can argue anything, but if you'd like us to look at that, we can certainly take a look at it.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the conversation that we've had amongst council, and along with the comments from Mr. Roloff, I'd like to make a motion to lay over ordinance 1963 until two weeks from tonight, or the next meeting, first meeting in February, February 12th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-64, which has amended room tax ordinance. Staff recommends laying over. I would look for a motion and a second. Councilmember Herman?
Mayor, I make a motion that we lay over ordinance 19-64, amend room tax ordinance until the next council meeting.
Second.
The next meeting would be February 12th. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance, ordinance 19-65, authorize the Director of Finance to issue citations. Does anyone register to speak to this ordinance?
No, no one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take a roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is ordinance 19-66, amend Chapter 30, zoning ordinance to create flood storage district within Section 30-156 of the floodplain overlay district. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone register to speak to this one?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take a roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
We now have two new ordinances, there will be no action taken on either one this evening. The first is ordinance 19-67, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district, impairments SMU, close burns to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, impairments SMU-PD, close burns at 2020 South Kaler Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. No one wants to speak to this? Next is ordinance 19-68, approve amendments to Chapter 19 Parks and Recreation of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. All right. We now have, we have two new resolutions. The first is Resolution 19-69, approve specific, specific implementation plan for increased playground and kindergarten at 575 Monroe Street, 581 Monroe Street, and 532 Broad Street. Boys Club of Oshkosh, Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone sign up?
No one has signed up.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye. Carried six.
The final is Resolution 19-70, approve City Manager 2019 goals. Did anyone register?
No one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just share a couple of comments, and then read off the City Manager's goals. So this is the second part of the City Manager's evaluation process that we've now completed. And the council does find that the City Manager continues to work in the best interests of the city of Oshkosh and its citizens, remaining focused on details in the strategic plan for the city. This year follows on the heels of the genesis of significant projects, such as the transload facility, Menominee Arena, and Oshkosh Corporation projects with numerous amendments, Oshkosh Avenue Development, and other significant development opportunities that heretofore were unanticipated. Moving these projects forward while maintaining basic services and continued implementation of strategic priorities, the City Manager diligently continues to serve the council and the city with a high level of professional administration. The City Manager, along with staff leadership, have made notable improvements, such that commentary from leaders across the state are asking for our guidance on similar issues of concern. Council recognizes there is continued need for us to keep our lines of communication open with the City Manager, and continued improvement. A few notable accomplishments include the recently passed professionally-prepared budget, a release of the new city website, significant street sewer, stormwater infrastructure improvements, along with exceptional customer service coming from multiple departments, and an award-winning GIS project. The council's confidence in the City Manager's abilities, along with the recent market survey of peer community administration, has led council to approve a pay raise for the City Manager in 2019, increasing the salary to the amount of $154,000. The council will continue to work on specific goals with the City Manager and finalize them in January. That's obviously a little bit dated, because we are approving those goals tonight. So number one, there are four goals. Update the debt management plan, recommend to council a new long-term general obligation debt goal, with a progress report to council by July 1, and a formal plan for council consideration prior to submitting the 2020 CIP and budget, approximately October 1st. Number two, evaluate the city's emergency preparedness plan, and conduct training for all department heads and other appropriate personnel, as it relates to the activation of the Emergency Operations Center by September 30, 2019. Number three, develop a policy for acquiring real estate, including blighted properties, and develop a policy by which the city and RDA-owned properties may eventually be conveyed back to private ownership for development, redevelopment, and/or affordable infill housing by June 1, 2019. And lastly, number four, sustain ongoing collaboration with union and community organizers in their annual celebration, involving city departments as needed to ensure a successful event. Continue to collaborate with the Oshkosh Community Success Coalition in advancing community-wide goals for diversity and inclusion. That's all.
I did want to make one comment on goal number three, and it's the wording of acquiring real estate, and I talked to Deputy Mayor Palmary before the meeting, that, that includes a single property or multiple properties within, within a neighborhood. This is something that the RDA, we've discussed this quite a bit, working with GOH9 and so forth, and other partners. Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to Deputy Palmary, Deputy Mayor Palmary for organizing the process. It seemed to go very well, for my first time through the, through the wringer, through the process, so thank you for organizing that. And thank you to City Manager Roloff for working with us. I know, coming into this, this term for myself, one of the maybe frustrating parts from the last year's goals was, you know, not having some deadlines on there, and being not as specific as we could have been. These goals definitely have some, some deadlines for you, self-imposed as well, you were definitely part of the process. But, but deadlines are good things, they spur action, and they make sure that things are being reported back to us in a, in a good and timely fashion for us to, to make good decisions later in the year. So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, I would look for a... You take a roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is council discussion, direction of City Manager and future agenda items. The first, workshops, joint meeting with the Oshkosh Area School Board, January 30 at 5:00 PM, at the Oshkosh Area School District Office at 215 South Eagle Street. Can everyone make that?
As of right now.
As of right now, yes.
Good. And next is a meeting with our legislatures, the proposed date and time is February 25th at 8:00 AM, the location to be determined. Councilmember Mugrower?
I apologize, can we go back to, is there a rough agenda, other than talking about transportation for schoolchildren?
Well, thank you for, for bringing up that question.
I apologize, I didn't get the button soon enough, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
There were some, some other items that the council members brought up from the last meeting, I know poverty was one of them, I believe, trying to think of, there was one other one, I haven't jotted down, I just have it on my last agenda. I did speak with Superintendent Cartwright, and she doesn't believe the school board is prepared to discuss the busing issue at this time, they would prefer to wait. Subsequent meeting, they felt they weren't ready to discuss that issue. I did have a, going back to my goal about diversity and inclusion, Superintendent Cartwright and I had an opportunity to drive down to Dubuque, so we had six hours, actually seven with the snowstorm, seven hours in the car. We discussed some ideas that we could certainly bring forward, but I don't think they're in a position to talk about it at this time, and I think we might be able to work on a couple of things that we can bring forward.
Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Thanks, Mayor. So Mr. Roloff, so they're not ready to talk about the trip to Dubuque?
Oh, no, the, on our trip to Dubuque, we brought up the busing issue.
Okay, all right.
And we talked about agenda items, and poverty was something that was certainly on their agenda, but they weren't ready to talk about busing, so...
So would it be appropriate for us to maybe have the discussion about the trip to Dubuque? On that joint agenda?
There, yeah, yes, yes. I think we could talk about that, that would be a great idea. And be happy to, I'll talk to Dr. Cartwright about, make sure we get our, our notes squared away, but yeah, I think that would be, would be good. We were stuck in a traffic jam in Madison, and we had plenty of time to talk, because we were moving at five to zero miles an hour. So we can do that. Thank you for that suggestion.
The next meeting is the rescheduling of the City Hall and Parks Facility Workshop, and I believe the date that's been recommended is January 29.
That's one week from today. I, I was just looking for something quick, if that's possible, otherwise, if, I thought the last time some council members had some possible conflicts on that date, and I think they're, they're both very important topics, so if you can't, I'd like to make sure we had no more than, you know, like, one council member missing, but that's up to you. You're going to have a one-hour meeting with the school board the day after? It's really about your...
What time are you looking at, on the 29th?
It would, it would be the same two-hour commitment that we looked for last time, 5:30 for the first one, 6:30 for the next one, each of them one hour, hard stop at Everybody's checking their phone, everybody's checking their phone, and everything, that, I thought, I remember Lori saying she couldn't make it, I don't know about, I don't know about Tom, Councilmember Peck, yeah, I think I remember Deputy Mayor Palmary saying she couldn't make it. Councilmember Allison Osby, you were a little on the fence, too, on that.
Yeah, because that takes two days out of traveling that week. I, I would say schedule it, and just let me try to work some magic.
We'll let you...
Later than the 29th, would that, would that help your schedule?
What's that?
Later than the 29th of this month, would that help your schedule?
No, it's just having two, two nights back-to-back on a off-council week, so I'll, I'll work some magic.
We'll contact Bolton FGM about doing that, thank you very much. Oh, and the, the meeting with the legislators, just, we jumped over that, February 25th, that's a Monday, I think the direction from council was, Mondays and Fridays seem to be the best day for the legislators. I know that Representative Schrah will be unavailable for that, but both Senator Fian and Representative Hinton were both available, and we tried to tie that in with a location where we could perhaps do a tour of a city facility for, for those representatives as well. So if it's two out of the three, is that satisfactory to council?
That's fine.
Okay. February 25th, we'll have it at 8 o'clock, and we'll let you know the location, but it'll involve some type of small tour.
In the past, we've done the library, then we did the field operations, facility...
Yep.
The museum, not the library.
We did both.
We have them both, okay.
That was the one we had in the evening.
Oh, okay.
So we'll find a suitable location. Thank you very much.
Next is recommendation from Mongreich Finance Committee regarding funding options to replace street and sidewalk special assessments. Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, City Manager Roloff, do you want to start on this, or do you want me to? Councilmember Peck, who's the chair of that committee, is unable to be here tonight, I don't know how you want to proceed with informing us.
Yeah, with, with Councilmember Peck absent, I, I guess I'll start it, and if you can just help provide some more con, context. The committee's direction from council was to take a look at the special assessment policy relative to this, and take a look at options for changes to the special assessment policy. I think there was a consensus on the, the committee that some amendments were appropriate, the question was, what's the appropriate funding source? So they went back and forth, and, and there was also the discussion about the, the option that Nina has enacted, that is different from a vehicle registration fee slash wheel tax, and I think the committee felt that that approach, which is based on impervious surface with a cap, would apply more equitably across all different land uses, both business, nonprofit, non-tax, non-taxable property, as well as businesses, and that it would non-tax, non-taxable property, as well as businesses, and that it would raise sufficient funds. Because with a vehicle registration fee, it was per vehicle. So, say a home with two vehicles and had a $25 fee, they'd be paying actually $50, whereas a flat rate per household might be more equitable. And the funds that would be generated would be sufficient enough not only to cover special assessments for streets, street reconstructions, but also sidewalk improvements, which are probably the most, from staff's experience, the one that generates the most calls, the most administrative overhead, in addition to the streets. And as was pointed out multiple times, is that this does not apply to utility special assessments. Those are different. A large part utilities, water is regulated by the Public Service Commission, but there would still be those assessments. But, the recognition is that for larger properties, a significant portion of the assessment would go away. For smaller properties, it's probably closer to half. It wouldn't completely eliminate them, because utility assessments, one lateral per lot pretty much is about the same distance to the edge of the street. So, you'd still be paying for utility special assessments. But, that's what the other communities that have used these fees as an alternative to special assessments have done. Of course, there are different equity issues in terms of how you apply the maximum, because there's a couple little nuances with that, because you have... The maximum is per parcel, or is it per land use? And depending on the nature of the ownership, you could have multiple ownership... You could have multiple parcels in a single development or just one. And those issues Nina themselves has admitted that they haven't worked out yet. They haven't implemented their fee, even though their council approved it. I think it would be more appropriate, from a transparency standpoint, that that's laid out before council before you vote on it, rather than saying, "Well, go figure it out and put it into the rules and don't really talk about it." And I don't think that reflects the transparency values that the council has. So, that's essentially the crux of where the committee's recommendation was. We were in no position to prepare ordinances and resolutions, because I think those details that I just referenced, they need to get worked out. With that, Councilmember Mudrauer, I'm not sure if you want to add any other flavor to the meeting itself and some of the context of the committee.
Sure. First, I have to say thank you to Trina and her staff, as well as James Robbie and City Manager Roloff. They've been working with us since August when we took it back up. And I know this council and previous finance committees have spoken and discussed it at length numerous times. But, we've been working on it since August, and we came to what we all felt that night. It was unanimous decision to move forward with a suggestion to replace the special assessments for roadwork and sidewalks with a fee that's applied to your water bills, similar to the, as City Manager Roloff mentioned, similar to the stormwater utility. Some of the things that led us there were, one, that committee listened when we met in November, I think it was right after a budget meeting. They listened to the concerns about equity and definitely listened to staff's thoughts as to how to save time, how to save labor with... Especially with adding in the sidewalk potential to cover that in there. The amount of time and effort it takes to administer that program every year, it adds up, and for what we looked at, we could do that. We could cover that as well. The equity part of it, everybody would be paying and everybody would be receiving a benefit. That was a huge driving concern. Previously, under the wheel tax, as it's been pointed out numerous times, and rightfully so, only the people driving cars eight thousand pounds and less would be receiving that cost. And yet, depending on what council had chosen, only a small segment of the population could be receiving a benefit. In this case, everybody pays and everybody receives a benefit. Personally, as well, for the finance side of it, paying cash for these construction projects is a big plus for me. Instead of having to take a... It's in any given year, anywhere from one million to 3.2 million in loans over, you know, 10- to 20-year notes and bonds to cover that. With the interest, those things keep compounding. Now, we can pay cash every year and reduce our borrowing by an estimate of potentially $2 million or more per year in borrowing. That's a big thing for me as we go forward, looking at our long-term debt and how we fund those operations. I think that was it for the beginning of it. I definitely want to be able to answer any of the council members' questions from my side of it that I can, but maybe I'll take it back up afterwards.
One thing I want to say, and I'll make this very clear. Trina and I met this afternoon and went through a spreadsheet for the street of mine that was done two years ago, Bay Shore Drive. And there's two sides of Bay Shore Drive. One has more rentals than the other, has homes with a much bigger frontage on the street. And so, everyone understands, no matter what we call this, you will still wind up paying for some of the work. You will still be paying for your laterals and so forth. And we looked at both sides of the street. This is worked on two years ago. The north side, which is almost all single-family, at the end of the day, the homeowner would be paying still 25% of the work. And this would... The other 75 is covered by this fee. We looked at the other side of the street, which has a different mixture of properties, and surprisingly, the numbers shifted by 1%. So, in that case, the homeowner is picking up... The property owner is picking up 24%. The other 76 is covered by this fee. So, I think there's a lot of misconceptions in the community that this will make these fees assessments go away. It will not. There is still basically a 25% cost to the property owner at the end of the day. So, everyone, just keep that in mind. We can't emphasize that enough, that there will still be a remaining cost to the property Yes. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. That was actually one of my points, because that was the question that I was going to ask back to Mr. Mudrauer and Mr. Roloff, is, you know, that it's not that it covers 100% of sidewalks and impervious surfacing, right?
The bill would be based on impervious surface, but there would be a flat rate of roughly less than $4 a month for residential property.
No, but what I'm saying, when it comes to, like, sidewalks happen to be replaced, it's not covering 100%. Or, you're saying it is covering 100%.
Suggestion is 100%.
This will cover 100%.
Aprons that are required to be done, because we have an apron... Right away, apron policy as well. Pardon me if I'm interrupting.
Please, keep going.
100% for sidewalk replacement, 100% for apron replacement, right from the Streets Department, whatever they determine needs to be replaced. That would be included in our suggestion from the committee level to council.
Okay. And it's the underground work?
Right.
Correct. Water lines, sewer.
And that's so... That's what I'd say. So, like, to the point that was just made, and probably Mayor Cummings knows this, maybe even Deputy Mayor Palmary, I know Mr. Peck, I obviously, you know, whenever you're looking to run for your seat on council and you have the opportunity to communicate with the public and getting signatures, outside of everybody wanting a KFC still, the second thing that was incredibly important was definitely understanding what this exactly meant. And I think we have to be just really, really careful, because even here, you know, on item number 42, recommendation from Long Range Finance Committee regarding funding options to replace street and sidewalk special assessments. So, if you're not in the know, you're going to read that and you're going to think this is going to cover everything. And I can tell you, that is the perception, especially being out and talking to our citizens, you know, just prior to the first week of January. So, I think I really appreciate the work that Long Range Finance is doing and staff is doing, because again, we've talked about this. Gosh, I think it's come around once every other year, every two years or so. But, I think however we... Whatever we do, and if we move forward with this, and we do think it's a good idea to do it, I think we just have to be very, very careful. And I think we also need to work with our partners in the community, like Oshkosh Independent and also the Oshkosh Herald, just to make sure that we have the wording correct so that the public is not misled.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Councilwoman Allison Osby as far as getting that word out. And I think we also need to thank the city of Nina for coming up with a creative alternative that we could borrow and make our own that would potentially be more palatable. I do have question for Mr. Roloff, Mr. Mudrauer, as it relates to, there were some suggestions and discussions about whether or not there would be, for lack of a better word, an amnesty or some kind of prorated forgiveness, I guess, for those who have recently, and however recently gets to find, had to pay that fee. And I guess I would just ask if you could share any more detail on that.
That was discussed by the committee, and I think that they felt that that was something that we would come back and look at. The city of Nina, it's a very modest, very modest approach to it. Essentially, they would waive the fee for up to five years, depending on how recent your special assessments were. The more... Most recent would be a five-year waiver of the fee, down to if it was five years ago or five construction years ago, it would be a one-year. So, that would vary.
So, the lookback equals the forgiveness or the amnesty or whatever?
Yeah, but the issue is that the dollar-wise, the maximum would be roughly about less than $250. So, if you had a $10,000 assessment, it really is a drop in the bucket. But, I think it was meant to be...
Good faith.
Good faith, yeah. And I think that was the issue. Matt, I'm not sure what you...
I can... You put it very well, but that was the thing. It was... That committee felt that maybe that was more council direction, that council needed to make that determination. If so, could always go back to Long Range Finance for, you know, their further consideration. But, that being a policy decision, helping out taxpayers retroactively may be more of a council directive than coming from them telling you to give amnesty or an exemption after the fact. But, Mr. Roloff's right. The amount... While it does, every dollar is important, and I've always said that, in the comparison to what some of the special assessments have been over the last few years, it only adds up to a couple hundred dollars. But, definitely worthwhile discussing and as an olive branch to those that get pretty hurt by some of the special assessment costs, that maybe that is something that has to be an option. And I think as we give direction, hopefully it's positive direction, because I'm supportive of it, but as we give direction, that maybe that is one of the things that staff prepares, you know, if there was a five... Maybe a five-year lookback or a five-year or a three-year or whatever year, that staff puts those numbers together to show us what that would mean in terms of bottom line as to how much revenue would still be generated even with those exemptions.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, we only... Especially assess 100-ish properties every year for roadwork, a couple hundred. It's not...
James just nodded yes, so yeah.
Yeah, you're in the 100 to 150 property range per year for, I mean, think Oregon and Washington and the few other streets we just did around this area. So, it doesn't amount to a whole lot, so it definitely is worthwhile talking about as part of the process. One last thing I wanted to put in there was, actually two. The committee definitely felt the need to educate and educate very well. That was something that they definitely spoke several times about, and do it well and do it often, and do it again, just to make sure people fully understood what they were getting and what they weren't. And then, the other part was, another positive, was this was... This is local control on this issue. If we instituted some sort of wheel tax or a vehicle registration fee, it's administered by the state, and it's cut and dry, what we get to do with it, when we institute it, and what they return to us. In this particular case, we get 100% of the funds, and we get to decide what happens and how it happens with those funds, because it's local control on this issue with this particular fee structure.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess that was my question, and Mr. Mudrauer sort of answered it. The wheel tax or vehicle registration fee, when you call it, was controlled by state statute. There is no oversight on this, other than us oversighting it?
At this time, I think it's viewed, and I think City Attorney Lawrence spoke with the city attorney in Nina, and they both looked at it, and it's under home rule, so we have home rule. Now, that doesn't mean that the state legislature could say no to that at some time in the future, and there's no way anybody can guarantee that. You remember a couple of years ago, when we were at the LEED conference, we went back to talking about the vehicle registration fee, because the concern was that the state legislature was going to either restrict it or eliminate it or something like that. And it didn't come to pass, but it got traction for a while. I can't tell you that somebody would say, "Well, first Nina did it, now Oshkosh is doing it. We need to stop this." And the danger with anything changing your special assessment policy is going back, because then if you think people are mad about a lookback provision, if you suspend it for one year and you don't special assess, and then you go back to the old way, there are going to be a lot of people angry, except the people that you gave a waiver to. Other than that, everybody else in town will be pretty angry, and I have specific experience with that, that once you go... Once you change your policy, you got to stick to it. Hopefully, the state wouldn't pull the rug out from under us, but I can't guarantee that.
That being said, though, and I agree with what you're saying, I think we, as a council, need to be very, very specific to what that money is going to be used for, because all of a sudden, we're short someplace else. "Oh, we got this extra money. It was supposed to be for sidewalks. We're supposed to pay for the concrete, but we really got a bigger problem over here, and we want to shift that money." I think we need to make sure that in any ordinance, and I support moving forward with this, but that we are very specific to what that money can be used for, and only future councils or when I'm long gone can make a decision to change that. Otherwise, I think the perception out in the community is going to be it's just another way of putting money in our coffers to do whatever we want to do with the money. And I think that is a... Could be a bad perception out in the community. So, I think we have to be, to Mr. Mudrauer's point, concrete, sidewalks, period. And it's very specific in the ordinance that that's what it can be used for. Can't be used for anything else without council approval.
My only one fear is, once Madison gets whiffed, it gets a smell that we're collecting money, that they're not getting a piece of the action. What might they do to start to get some of that money into their coffers? Are we safe?
I think you're giving yourselves a perfect topic to talk to our legislators about when we meet with them on February 25. I think we got to talk about that, because having the rug pulled out from under us would be devastating. And I'm sure Nina would feel similarly. We're going to have representatives from both sides of the aisle at that meeting. I think we can, you know, look, this is what we're trying to do. And I think they're sympathetic. They understand that how special assessments are an issue, and everybody knows that you've been wrestling with this issue for a good part of five, six years.
The only concern is, as more and more communities go in this direction, which I assume they will, will Madison really want to put their hands in our pocket?
Good topic to bring up with the LEED.
All right. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Okay, just a real quick question, I guess, for Ms. Wilson, then. Would... Do you foresee any, I guess, impact on expenditure restraint with this particular method?
I would not see with the expenditure restraint. I would see they take the avenue of levy limits. That's what they've done with revenue is. They've imposed restrictions onto levy limits.
Meaning that if the... Some of these cases, they've said if you increase, create a fee, that you have to lower your...
Right.
Levy limit by that dollar amount. Again, it's a fear that's out there. We have already discussed, if this was adopted, how we would enable ourselves. We'd keep a separate fund, in part to discuss what Councilmember Herman talked about, is making sure it's more of a lockbox for specific purposes, but also so that we stay out of expenditure restraint and any possible levy limit impact.
Yeah, good points. Okay.
Essentially, Mr. Mayor, what staff will do at this time is, we'll work on appropriate ordinances and resolutions and policy options, because there'll be policy options. And we'll report to council when we think we can get it going. Just so you know, we will proceed with special assessment hearings, because as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the utility assessments are still applicable. We'll notify people of the street assessment, but we're going to disclose to them, this is going on. And I suspect that your special assessment hearing will... You'll find a lot of supporters of this idea when you show them an $8,000 to $10,000 assessment. And I think we're going to put a disclaimer, sort of a bright colored item in there, saying, "This reflects, including streets, council's considering..." "This reflects, including streets, council's considering possible amendments." You know, it'll be adjusted accordingly. Something to let them know what's going on, and make it stand out, so it's separate but understandable within the context of them getting a notice about a special assessment.
And I think we've got to put together a plan for communicating to the citizens that they will, in fact, still be paying a portion of this assessment.
Well, I think if it's very specific, that it covers the concrete in your street, and your sidewalk, but they are still responsible for the water lateral, the storm sewer and the sanitary sewers, that is still going to be assessable, that should be...
I think people see street, and they don't think underneath.
Viserals.
Well, I agree. It's just like when they send it out, when we do a street, they show all the laterals, all the information, and I think we, what you don't pay for, what you pay for.
It's going to involve a lot of education, and that's why we just can't do this like that. We have to really educate.
Right.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Just one other request, Ms. Roloff. If, when that comes back to us with those different policy options, and more fleshed out, could we have that in a more formal policy analysis format?
Absolutely.
Could you indulge us? Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on to citizen statements to the council. Has anyone registered?
No one is registered.
And I will not read this whole thing. Now, we have councilmember announcements. Usually this time of year, we do a recap on the fire department's food and toy drive from December, and rather than me go through it, we would have one of the organizers come forward and explain what they did this past December. So we have Eric Shea here, and I see him coming up, so the floor is all yours.
Hi. Thanks for having me. As the mayor said, I'm Eric Shea. I'm a firefighter paramedic with the Oshkosh Fire Department. I'm one of the co-chairs of our food and toy drive that we do every year. This year was our 20th year, 20th annual drive. So this year, we had a record year in food, or in toy and money donations. I guess I should step back. Do you guys, do you want me to explain a little bit what the drive is about, or...
I wish you would for the public, because...
Okay, sure.
We've all done the drive with you through all the years, but the public, you know, they hear the fire truck going down the street, and they may not know exactly what is going on.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so as I mentioned, so the 20th year, we get off-duty members from the fire department and their families to walk door-to-door with us to collect food, toys, and cash donations for the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army then distributes those through their distribution center and through their adoptive family program. So we also have the Oshkosh Fire and Police Equipment Store come with us to, they provide the antique fire truck that Santa rides on, that's kind of his sleigh. So we go through the cities, we sound the fire engine, make a lot of noise, play Christmas music, and we just go to door and collect food and toys for the Salvation Army. So as I mentioned, this year, we had a record year in toy and money donations. Overall, we took in 3,589 pounds of food, 3,590 physical toys, and $3,518.80 in cash donations. So as you can see, the numbers up there are, we break it down per station, per route. So those are the numbers from this year. And then I add it up, since my coworker and I took it over in 2010, we've kept track of every night, and we have taken in, since 2010, over 40,000 pounds of food, 26,000 toys, and nearly $20,000. So that's pretty impressive from, you know, the citizens of Oshkosh. We can't thank everyone enough for all the work they do and all their generosity. So as I mentioned, I'd like to just give a shout out to the Salvation Army, and Captain Don Carl and his wife Vicki, who do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work for this. They provide a truck every night with us, that we put all the donations in, and then they distribute them through their program that they have set up. And then they also handle the applications for the families in need and stuff like that. So they're instrumental to working with us and getting the donations where they need to go. Darren Moxon at the Oshkosh Fire and Police Equipment Store, he helps with the antique fire engine, and gets it going, gets the music and the lights working, and everything we need for that. And then also Rick Leib and Kim Gauthier from the Oshkosh North Communities Program. Their staff and students help us with a lot of behind-the-scenes work of promoting the drive. Some of you may have seen this year, the yard signs that we had out. That was all the students there. That was all their idea to create those and get the word out that way. And then they helped with a lot of the social media aspect of it, of promoting it on Facebook and Twitter. So I'd also like to mention, we have a Facebook and Twitter page where we send out the routes and some of the information every night, and try to post videos and photos of the nights.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
It's been fun to participate, too.
Yeah, yeah, and we appreciate you all coming along whenever you can, and it's great, you know, from my aspect, it's great just to get out to the city that we serve and go door-to-door, and, you know, have a short conversation with people, and, you know, see the generosity of everyone here, so.
It was a pleasure to participate.
Yeah.
Some of us walked the entire route.
Yeah, they get to be a little long sometimes, but, yeah.
Great job.
All right. Thank you for having me. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. Roloff, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For your announcements and statements.
Handful of things here. There's a memo in your packet regarding purchase of portable radios for the fire department. We are part of a state Wisconsin Department Administration purchase contract, so happy to get those. Those are items that are in the budget. The second one has to do with a project that we're working on with the council. City Clerk Hubrigg had placed a item in the newsletter this past week. It pretty much runs the same thing. It's about a policy for unused liquor licenses. Really just strengthening that language to give the council authority that they've been enacting, but it's not specified out there, that you can grant extensions based on your judgment. We're going to be proposing that for you to consider. And then also, giving the clerk the authority to withhold issuance of licenses until all the conditions are met, so it's very clear that the city clerk has those responsibilities. If a health inspection doesn't pass, if one of those other inspections don't pass, gives her that authority to do so. The idea is that City Clerk Hubrigg sends out the materials around March 15th. We'd like to get it adopted by the council by March 1st. So I think you'll see the first draft of the ordinance, so the first reading of the ordinance at the meeting in February, adoption at the second meeting in February, and that'll enable city clerk to put those in there. So everybody will be forewarned when they receive their renewal materials, and we figured that was probably the most effective way to do it. Update on possible redevelopment of Aviation Plaza. You'll recall back in December that I reported I was approached by some of the owners of property there about a possible development, and they said they wanted to come to a subsequent meeting. It didn't happen on January 8th, and it's not happening again on January 22nd. They're not, at this time, prepared to make that presentation. They're still working on issues. Some of the concerns you still, you expressed back then are still valid. They're aware of those things, and I don't have an exact date at this time, but I'll keep you posted, just so you know. But I know there was some curiosity about that, because it was supposed to be imminent, and now it hasn't been, so my advice to council is, don't hold your breath. So it's just one of those things. Report of vendors receiving over $300,000 in payments from the city in 2018. Finance Director Larson had put the memo in your packet this evening. That normally accompanies that, but this is a report that we're required to do according to code, and I think it just gives you the reading of all the vendors who we do. Most of the largest numbers are for capital improvement projects, and other deposits related to investments and processing of payments, big-dollar amounts. And then there's also the ones that are, that I think council's also concerned about, are engineering and professional services. Those are all in there, and if you have any questions about those, I think I'd encourage you to contact Finance Director Larson. But several years ago, the council, and Finance Director Larson, I felt strongly about this, I had the authority to grant unlimited contract approval for professional services. I didn't think that was appropriate, and so we enacted an ordinance that council has to approve anything over $75,000, or if it changes, that it gets it over $75,000. And then also report anything over $25,000. I think that's worked very well. I think it holds staff accountable, and I want that accountability. That's, I was not comfortable in issuing contracts of an unlimited amount. And so Finance Director Larson and her staff, with this report that's now required by code, we provide it annually. I'm really impressed that Trina was able to get this report out within three weeks after the start of the year, so kudos to Trina and her staff for getting that done. We can answer questions, but if you got a question about an individual one, I'd probably suggest that you talk to Ms. Larson separately about those.
I was just going to commend her for putting that together in, like you said, such a short amount of time of having implemented that new system. That's the kind of thing I think we've been asking to see for a while now, so it's kind of nice to finally see that come to fruition.
The next one is also according to our, one of our policies, our donation report. We're a little late on this one. I guess we discovered that this one was also requiring annual reports, so we have the donation report for 2015, 16, and 17. The council does approve some of these, and I approve others, but this is just a report of anything over $100 or more. We get a lot of small ones that we, we just, for purposes of this report, we don't include.
I just had one question about the format on that, and that is, it looks like the second part of the document gives us who the donor was, but the majority of the first part of the document, we can't see who the donor was. Can you help me understand that?
Sure. As part of the donation policy, we changed some of the procedures, which one of the forms was a donation form. So after the implementation of that donation form, that allowed us to gather greater detail, which, that you're seeing that impact in this report now. So the years prior to that is where more limited data was available, and we didn't have the necessary forms to give you the detail.
All right. I can ask you my other questions some other time.
Okay. Okay. The Oshkosh Corporation headquarters update is in your agenda packet. Happy to answer any questions if you have there. Deputy Mayor Palmary and I discussed, and I think I've heard from several of you about, you know, the local impact of federal government shutdown. You know, I think we provided you with the internal perspective on the city of Oshkosh operational side, and right now, there really isn't much of an impact. We don't get much direct federal dollars. The one program that we get the most direct federal dollars is the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. But there is also a federal requirement that we must spend the prior year's allocation before we can get the new year's allocation, and we're in a position where we haven't spent that money yet, so we're still in the mode of spending that. If we were in a position where we were asking for reimbursement of federal funds, right now, they wouldn't be processed. Fortunately, with our, you know, with our fund balance and our cash reserves, we have cash flow, from a cash flow standpoint, we have sufficient funds to do that. From the city standpoint, we're okay right now. The only other one that probably would draw the most concern, if it dragged out much longer, would be on the transit side. All of our funds come from the state, but the state gets a lot of their funds from the federal government, roughly 50/50, not exactly, but close enough. And if the state stopped receiving funds, they would probably cash-flow it for a while, but at a certain point, they would hit the wall and say, "Sorry, cities, we can't distribute funds, because we don't have enough sufficient funds." I could see that scenario happening. We haven't gotten any indication from the state that they've hit that wall yet. So on the city side, the city operational side, it's not significant. However, the impact on the community, it depends on who you talk to. The county, because in Wisconsin, counties have primary responsibility for much of the welfare programs, traditional welfare programs, they're going to get hit more quickly with that. They've gotten notices that the food stamp program will be cutting short. Now, does that impact directly our operations, our finances? No. But think back to when the Great Recession occurred. The impact on the food pantry was significant, because donations went down and need went up. And that is a distinct possibility as things go on. With that, I know Councilmember Palmary has sent me numerous things. There's this, and there's that. There are so many other moving parts that don't have to do with the city, but certainly are going to have an impact on our community as the shutdown drags on.
Just one very quick comment. I find it inconceivable that our elected officials, better known as senators and congressmen in Washington who are getting paid, would stiff government employees. And I can't think of a better term. They can call it what they want. They're stiffing employees. And if you did that in the private sector, the employees would walk. And the chairman, the president of the company, would be fired within nanoseconds of stiffing the employees. I just can't comprehend how they sit there and are stifling the country's economy, and again, I'll say it again, stifling, stiffing employees. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Yeah, just a follow-up comment. Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Roloff, I'm wondering, you know, would it be appropriate for us to have some type of joint discussion, or you to reach out perhaps to some of our county folks as to, you know, some of those scenarios? Because it also applies to a significant number of folks that are in housing. I believe the director for the Housing Authority mentioned, you know, there were over 413 properties involved as well. And I guess I would just encourage folks that are receiving those kind of benefits to reach out to your county caseworker, or someone to verify, you know, what your benefits are in this coming month.
I'm not really sure. In terms of what we can do in sort of notifying people, you know, we do have the ability through our various communications channels to let the public know about some of these things. Is that what you're talking about? Just trying to let them know that, you know, make sure you check in with your appropriate agency? We can certainly do that through our communications channels. But that's about it. That's, you know, we can't, you know, we're going to be concerned about what happens at the food pantry, and if there's any concern there, we're going to talk to them, but we can't directly help them, but we can certainly let people know.
We should probably be prepared to know what they're able to handle.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And just so we end on a more up note, I'm glad I put the last one last. The mascots in movies event at the senior center is this Friday, and it will also be on February 23rd. Fun event, free admission, donations appreciated, lots of different mascots, the A&W bear and all those things that you see on the screen. So we certainly want to encourage people, family-oriented event, bring your PJs, blankets, whatever, enjoy yourselves, and we're going to be promoting it through our social media. So wanted to make council aware of that, and with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just want to, before we adjourn, want to make a real quick comment. I want to thank some people for the other evening, my good friend and co-chair for Unit Dean Committee, Dr. Sylvia Carey-Butler, who was the Vice Chancellor of Academic Support and Inclusiveness at the university. Chancellor Levitt, the, I was honored with the 2019 Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award. That's it. Thanks for coming here, which I'll keep away from my grandson.
There you go.
It was a total surprise. As a matter of fact, you guys kept a good secret. Mark knew, the chief of police knew, Diane knew. I had no clue what was going on. As a matter of fact, I had to leave the session early to get back here to meet with a bunch of Cub Scouts, and you called me and said, "You've got to get back here," because Dean had to talk to me about something. So I kind of panicked, what is he going to talk to me about?
We had to come up with a line, come up with a query.
You guys kept a secret very well, so thank you, everyone. It was a heck of an honor, so. With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.